All right. Good evening, everyone. It is May twenty-third, five thirty-one. Uh, this is Council McBride. I'll call the meeting of the Town Council Public Safety Committee to order. Uh, members present are Council Casari and Council Franco. Town Manager Bert is also present, I believe. Chief Driscoll is in presence as well?
Yes.
Um, so with regards to communications, the only communications I've had is back and some back and forth with John Burt in terms of requesting some information. I think I provided most of that in the detailed agendas. Uh, I also had some communication with him today regarding, uh, we, we had talked last week about getting some information from the assessor. He provided that to me or Mary provided that to him like an hour ago. So I don't think we're going to be able to discuss that tonight, but we do have that for next meeting. Uh, to go over, because I think it will be important to determine, uh, the overall larger picture of what percentage of of land the town has, uh, is, is non-taxable, and therefore we can make better determination on what should go to the fire districts and what should be withheld to the town. But uh, that's all the communication I've had. I'm not sure if any other counselors have had communications.
Just the, um, the information on the training center from the insurance and all of the regular communications we've had.
Oh, thank you. I forgot to mention that, I guess. And, and just to reiterate, Council Casari, that was, John, you had sent that around and that was to indicate uh, they should not refrain from, um, maintaining insurance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Council Franco, any?
No.
Um, our next order of business is the approval of the minutes. Uh, the minutes for the main night two thousand twenty-three package, uh, information was in your package. I'm not sure if you got the opportunity to review it. If so, can it tear motion? Or if you haven't, we can do it later in the meeting or at another time.
Although the acceptance of the main night twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes.
Motion has been made by Casari, seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor of the minutes as presented and voted on? Uh, say aye, aye. Our motion carries three oh. Uh, next order of business is to discuss the Paquonic Bridge Fire District funding and/or the Paquonic Bridge Fire Training, I think.
The training, if you're gonna give a quick, you know, I'm not sure whether you could do too much tonight, but, um, I can give just a fast update.
Yes, please.
Chief, when is the next GFAL meeting?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. The, the fire departments will be meeting Wednesday. I did talk to, to, uh, Chief Ben Freddy, um. Uh, he just kind of reiterated what, sorry, already the case. He says some of the departments are fine with carrying, he said the GFAL carries insurance anyways, as my understanding. He says he doesn't really understand why any would vault at the insurance requirement. And he understands why we would want to require it. And, uh, I think you, and I think you, Driscoll's at, you, you guys want to, okay, to have this up here. Yes. And then, uh, esteemed Ron Uhas, uh, Senior from the Fire Board is also here.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone.
May I ask a question, Chair, about the? So why do we keep reiterating about insurance? Is there someone that says this on the?
Yeah, there's some that, if that's what made it fall apart, some of them. I, I guess the smaller departments involved, you know, they're, they have their own insurance. Uh, there's some for the overall. We think the council take online bill.
Okay.
It was if they have somebody injured. Now, of course, if somebody got injured, they hit their book or stuff, one of the employees, and then.
Right. So there are some smaller departments that don't want to acquire the area insurance. Do they want to be a part of the training?
Yes, though, Ben Freddy asked, well, if that falls apart, can we do an agreement within some individual department? Um, so my understanding, I don't think as a group, it's been discussed for quite a while. Is that right? Since, well, no, um.
There the insurance, I can only figure out, I can't figure out, I've got fire officers. Um, there was, there was an issue with the insurance and a liability agreement that we had, that, that I had a concern with, that I brought forward. Um, as far as insurance goes, fire officers went out and purchased a rather large insurance policy to meet, meet the needs. My issue was that there was liability terms in there that the Quonic Bridge Fire District would personally be held responsible for other people's actions. And this was supposed to be an agreement between fire officers and the town of Rock. So the concern is not only has fire officers have a liability, but I have a liability for what other people are doing out there. And if I'm not there and I can't stop it, then why should, like, I can't sign off the Quonic Bridge taking on that personal liability.
Well, as long as, I think earlier on, you, the GF, last I heard, I don't think the GFAL had insurance. Um, at that time, so that, and that would have been more of an issue at that time. So it sounds like maybe we're closer to.
Yeah, there's, that was the, the, the big thing that I, the issue that I had was the, the liability. Um, and I, and I understand the town, I completely agree with that. Yeah, it's just that if, say, ABC Fire Department's down there doing something and they, someone got hurt. It's, it was listed that we were going to be the, the Quonic Bridge Fire District could get sued and all the other members individually could get sued. And that was the big, that was when we were like, wait a minute, something's not right here. There are a few other little stipulations in there, um, that, um, general maintenance of the facility, the, the plowing, things like that. I think just needs to get a ton of iron now, too. I, I'm, that's just me speaking on, on my concerns of it, not.
One thing, so, one thing is I know at least some of the members wanted to let outside agency use it. That would fall under your insurance, though. Uh, the GFAL insurance.
I, I can tell you, but on bridges against.
Yeah, okay. Um, that'll be something that as a group they'll have to decide they want to take on. I'd really keep it, uh, you know, it seems to me that might be a next step later potentially, if you see how these four departments go.
It's, it's kind of, it's kind of crazy because for firefighters become certified, they have to take a certification class of firefighter one is, is like the entry level. And a lot of outside agencies will come in and contract out to do that work. And they need to be able to ladder buildings, which they would be able to do out back here. Um, there's an issue with theatrical smoke, but they need to be able to do things like that. So it's usually contracted out by certified instructors that have their own insurance and have things like that. So it wouldn't be like someone coming in to make a profit and not benefiting from it. It would most likely be grud volunteer firefighters getting the training. It's just that it would be a, a company that comes in to, to supply the set training. So it's, it's it's kind of convoluted, because.
It was becoming more of a regional training, though.
Yeah, we're trying to do that way, yeah.
In which case, if we were to do that, you'd want them to provide insurance with indemnifying the GFAL individual departments, us, you know.
Yeah, and even if it wasn't outside instructor that came in, they would have that. You know, it's not like you're paying someone cash on the table, they would have insurance, that would be a business.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, that's just, that's Paquonic Bridge's stance. That's not, I can only speak on that part.
The only reason I asked this because we've been getting emails about insurance, but I don't think it's been made necessarily there to us what the issue was and why insurance issue was being spoken of. So just to have a broad under.
Yeah.
This is the first time where they've now got insurance.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been some breakdowns, I think.
Do you think we bring it up at the meeting Wednesday, or I don't know?
Uh, if, if Tony, if Tony's on there and he doesn't, I, I'll bring it forward.
Tim, what do they do like in New Haven at the, don't they have one up there?
Fire. New Haven Fire Department has their own training facility. Regional wise, um, there are several regional fire schools throughout the area. Unfortunately, the closest one for us is Willa Manic. So it's hard.
Yeah, but insurance wise, what do they do? I guess if, if it's just for, for their town, it's easy for them like New Haven. But regional ones must have some insurance stipulations.
Regional has their own insurance and that any departments that come in have to have workers comp insurance, which all of us have, all the departments have, and liability insurance. If anyone's damage, that, that would be covered. Um, it's just that, that making sure that the limits are high enough and things like that. Um, I, I know the fire officers, we, we, it costs us a lot to get that insurance. So I, I know that that's been.
And I believe we passed a CIP to do, hopefully it hasn't got up much since, it could have got up since then, but I think we passed a CIP to do some of the legwork to get that set up for the training. I remember, yeah, ninety or a hundred thousand somewhere in there.
That was to, to, for the new pipe lay down.
Yeah, some of that.
I know we purchased, uh, ground fires has already purchased the tanks for the water runoff and things like that. So I know there's, there's some money that we have to get together before we could start training there that that zoning had, had put down with us.
That's probably been what years, at least it has to be spent by five, but you can give permission to extend it, but.
Say it was still in the R T M when it was passed, so.
Well, we probably move fairly quickly. And while the same council's in place as it is, I think it'd be, they'd be pretty soon, so.
And do you see any other obstacle?
Nothing at all.
On the town's side of it, their perspective?
No, I mean, they would like to have more, uh, broad ability on their training, but that's dictated solely by the plan of zoning commission. They said, what, they said they might extend, allow some extension of the hours after a year of operations. See how it goes. Maybe once you get going, they might deal with.
Planning and zoning committee?
Commission.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like, and all that had to go through them. So they have all that approval. Insurance was the only thing.
But with planning and zoning, you, you can go back every year and keep asking for.
Yeah, they just said you couldn't come back until you've operated for a year. So we have to get it going and then they can try it. They're not going to extend the hours until they see how well it works.
What are the hours?
I don't have a copy of the agreement.
Friday evening, Saturday, Sunday, as long as there's nothing going on at the annex. If there's anything at the annex, we're not allowed.
Why, did they say why?
Originally it was noise and parking issues, but really we're not going to be parking in the parking lot, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So since we're on this subject, John, what's, what's the next steps to move this forward? It's really to get the insurance signed off on from all the groups that you're looking at.
I think if, once they say they're ready to move, you know, make sure that, I think they'll just make sure as a body of the GFAL want to move forward. And then we'll hammer out the last details. Not a lot, the, the thing that the council has to do is we have to have the agreement with GFAL. That's the thing the council has to do. We have a draft that just needs to be tweaked, so.
So this committee just doesn't have a lot to do with regards to that particular.
Well, I think, um, you know, we could at the next meeting, look at the agreement if you wanted to look at it and recommend it to the, straight to the council, rather than going through Cal to you guys. But, but hopefully by next month, we'll hear more than, uh, whatever.
Could you just email me the latest one, just in case Tony's not there? And I'll make sure that I have it for Wednesday to give, to give to everybody and I'll see if I can get the, the president to push a little pressure to him to be there.
And, and the reason I brought this as referrals, because it was what I had heard was how greatly needed it was. So and I, and I, it's been sitting stagnant for so, you know, for a while here, and I was trying to help get in, that the council could possibly get involved and get things going.
I, I truly appreciate it. I, I will we will use it with, with the Friday and Saturday. It, it will be difficult, but I mean, we will definitely put it to good use. I mean, there's, there's a lot of work that we're going to have to do to be able to, to get the whole benefit and use out of it. Um, there, there's some other stipulations that have been, that have been brought forward that we're going to have to overcome, but we can do it. Great opportunity. I'm sorry.
Maybe it's just a starting point.
Yeah, exactly.
They realize it's
I hope so.
P pass was brushing people's minds at the time, too, and there was worries over that. But I think that probably was more back there, that even though that's not an issue here.
Right, so that's what I'm thinking, that you could start with something and then maybe, because I know some of the fire departments, they do training on like Wednesday nights and certain Wednesday nights of the month, they all go to training.
Right, that, now, part of it is they also do indoor training, like conversion training. They wouldn't be able to use on weekdays, because as, as we often are have more requests than we can handle. That's part of why they want to do that.
Tim, financially, how much does it cost us to train somewhere else? Do they charge us for that, or they just invite you in, or?
No, the state doesn't do anything for free. It's pretty healthy price, but, um, we're not going to be able to do everything that we can do at the, at the regional fire schools to move their class A burn building, but we do live fire training and stuff like that. We're not going to build that back here. It's not, not set up for that. But that could be anywhere training for a one-day event at one of these regional schools is thousand to two thousand dollars, depending on what the training is, what you're doing, how many instructors you need.
So we're certainly going to outweigh the cost of the insurance.
Oh, one, one day of training down here for one department will more than pay for itself. Absolutely, yes.
Uh, looks like dollars are actually a little more broad. What the agreement says is, they said you can't do live fire or any kind of smoke training. Uh, it says that should only be allowed on Friday evenings, beginning at five, and on Saturdays, Sundays. However, you can do other activities, other times, as long as you park the lots clear. You could do during, uh, let's see, um, in the normal business hours of, uh, annex seven thirty to four thirty, Monday through Friday, and during hours, four thirty, eleven, Monday through Thursday. Public areas will be cut free of fire on premise. And as the week was weekends, if the town council hasn't been here or anything, so it's a little more broad than that. So I like fire types of that, it would be restricted to even, so.
A long-term sound like.
Four thirty to eleven, they can use.
Basically, any other, any other day. Oh, yeah, until, uh, let's see, um.
The smoke was just the weekend, is that what you're saying? That theatrical smoke?
Yeah, then you can only use the live fire training and theatrical smoke, uh, Friday evenings, beginning at five, and anytime Saturday and Sunday, unless we have something going on. Um, and we thought there'd be a conflict.
All right, and then during the week, what was the seven thirty to four thirty, and four thirty to eleven?
So during the normal business hours of seven thirty to four thirty, Monday through Friday. And then four thirty to eleven, Monday through Thursday, because on Friday you can do the spoke starting at five. You can do any other trainings.
So did you plan on doing training, like getting people out of a car?
Yeah, we can application training. We have to build a concrete pad to be able to do that. But like I said, there's some cost factors and some things we have to do.
And I know part, part of it was other employees that was building, that reached out to P Z C, the Plan Zoning Commission, they want any kind of smoke or anything worried about the smoke coming into the building while they're here.
The theatrical smoke?
Yeah, uh, or any smoke period, so. P Z C was cognizant of that, didn't want to be there.
Five burn trailer are going to be a part of this facility?
They have a gas one. I just don't think that there was, I don't think there was a plans of actually using it. I'm done. I know there was talk about trying to store it here. There isn't really any. There, there's no class A smoke. It would all be theatrical smoke that's pumped into the trailers. Roscoe's, um, theatrical smoke. It's not, it's not dangerous. If you go to a, a play or go to a show, same, that's something.
And they're worried about getting into the ventilation here. And how far away from the building?
About five hundred feet, six hundred feet, quite a ways.
Does it even travel that far?
No.
There's potential union issues too, so it's not something we can just change until it's, we try it for a while.
Yeah, get our foot in the door and see how it all works.
Yeah.
I agree. I just had two questions about it, because I know.
Sounds like a big money saver for all the districts in the town, right?
I agree.
It, it that the value that you can't get out of it is all of training together.
Right.
And just, that's going to build on relationships and that's what's going to make the town safer is that interaction even more so.
Agreed.
Which is huge.
Completely agreeing.
But we're not storing any there. Uh, anything, anything that comes in is coming in on the, on the vehicles that is normally on the vehicles as well.
I want to check with Greg, make sure prices haven't gone up from what we budgeted since then. And to see, I don't, it's a little bit of time to set it up, to do the setup, so I guess see what that is.
So next meeting, we'll review that document. John, John will have that to review.
Yeah, I'll send it out to everybody.
Awesome, awesome, thanks. Any other, any other questions or comments on this particular topic?
Well, when you go to your meeting and you discuss this, would you ask the other, would you tell them that we're also dealing with the, um, funding as well, and they're, and let everybody know that they're all welcome to come to our meetings and to discuss these things with us?
Yeah.
Because we, we have tried reaching out in the past, from what I understand, the council as a whole, and we really didn't get much response. I mean, there were a few, but not inventory.
Um, yeah, and if you, the next time you have a meeting, so, um, I'll try and email it to, to the president and get it out to everybody.
I would think it may be the next Cal is going to be the thirteenth. I think it may be, or somewhere, who's out at the, who's at that time? If we want to do this again right before the Cal?
Sure, I'll be in town that week.
David, does it work for you?
Yeah, I think that works for me. Just true.
So six thirteen at five thirty?
Yeah, that works for me. And what I was, what I was going to go into next is kind of some thoughts on how we could submit information to them to provide us back based upon what we talked about last, last meeting. So I don't know if, uh, counselors have seen that document I just presented tonight. Because I think there's two, there's two main issues, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. But there's, the big issue I think is not big, but just the main, the main issue is the summaries page of the one point seven. I think the document you have, ladies, is one point four. That was incorrect. It's actually one, seven, one, two, seven, six, eight.
What page are you looking at?
Uh, the, the handout that John, I think John provided to you, on top of it, it will say, uh, page seven, fiscal twenty-four, proposed pilot budget. Oh, you know what? I can share my screen, do that.
I got, you can if you'd like, but I have it. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Um, are you seeing, are there two, are you seeing the one that says page seven? Are you seeing the one that?
Yep, at the top, page, page seven. Yes, but our number is different. It's one, four.
I think it was an incorrect number. So this is the correct number, one, seven. So, and, and John, like your input here, because the way I'm looking at is we currently have a proposed pilot budget of one, seven, one, two from the state. The approved fire district budget based upon the council's increase and John Burt's increase earlier than what we received. The, the, the district's receiving about twenty-five percent. So I think the first big discussion is how much of the pilot should go to, uh, the fire districts. And as we talked about last time, this was historical percentage is fifty, forty-three, thirty-seven, sixty-one. We mentioned that, and this is on, this is in your package. Page sixteen, it started at eighty-five percent, page seventeen.
Yeah, the one, the one, seven is two thousand twenty-three. The one, four is correct for twenty-four and twenty-five.
Oh, it is, okay. All right, thank you for that. So I want to change that. So it goes back to, I think, twenty-nine. Um. What, what, can someone say what that number is? Because I don't have that, that one, four?
One, four, nine, four, nine, three, four.
Okay. And I can't, um, because I'm on the screen, I can't really see it. So if somebody has something to say, just kind of interrupt me. So this is at twenty-nine percent for the twenty-four. These are all the percentages in the past. And if you just page eighteen, your document talks about the finance director way back recommended fifty percent. Town manager kept it at the current practice. Uh, the, the town created in two thousand two, a hundred twenty-five thousand. And then this past year, twenty-three, the town manager had a hundred and twenty-nine, too. So this is, I, I think, one of the bigger discussions we need to have, which is how do we develop a process for allocating what percentage? And this is what I'm going to move this over. Can you see this screen? Do, do you see a new screen come in?
Yes.
Okay, so this is what John just sent, sent an hour ago. I, I started to do some work, but I couldn't really, I couldn't really get anything done. But I think the question becomes how we dive into what the towns, um, you know, really what percentage of that one, four should the town get versus what the district should get? And in order to do that, I think we need to review this detail that Mary sent over. Uh, to see, you know, you don't want to give a hundred percent of it to the fire district because the town gets hosed on, you know, what is this, one point five? You know, billion dollars or so. So I don't think we can do a lot of work on this particular piece tonight because we haven't reviewed it. John said he's got some questions, but I think that's the kind of the, the big picture item is how much of this one, four should go to the fire districts and how much you go to the town. But, and, and Rachel, you were just, uh, referring to having them come to the meeting. The second page in your document, I kind of put together this just, you know, basic spreadsheet, which you can hack up and change. But what I thought we'd do is send something like this out to the fire districts and have them complete this or any, any other additional information that they should provide to us. Because I think the second piece of the puzzle, which we talked about last meeting was what percentage of the, of the percentage we, what we deem appropriate to the fire districts should go to each one of these, these areas. So what I tried to do is how can we analyze that data? So I put, I just put some, some metrics on square mileage, property value, taxable, non-taxable, population density, budget, employees, responses, apparatus, and any other thing, because I think a good starting point for us is to really dive into, and Paquonic Bridge has provided a lot of this information already. So we have it, a lot of it already for them, but I think to do a a good comparison is we want everyone to be able to submit comparable data so we can compare, uh, you know, the, their organization, what it's like, and therefore come up with some rationale for who should get what percentage. So that's kind of was my thought to do something like this, uh, to send it out to them. And I think, Council Frank, you mentioned, you know, send them something certified that mandates they come to the meeting. But I think n- not just maybe come to the meeting, but come with information that we can use to make better decisions. So I'll stop, I'll stop talking from now, but that's kind of what I was, what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, we're just standing in front of the TV looking at this. Don't take it down.
Oh, okay.
So like the non-taxable items? I mean, how do you weigh a school as a non-taxable versus maybe open space?
Well, again, that's why this is just a draft for you to look at. We can change it however you want, and add to it, because what I think, I'm sorry?
No, I was asking the fire department, like, do they weigh those differently?
So the, the, the numbers that I've given you come from the tax assessor's office directly. So somewhere with the assessor's office, they.
They tried to, they tried to estimate what the taxes would be. That's part of getting the reimbursement from the state, I believe.
Because I'm just wondering, like, I, it has like the value of those type of properties, but if something happens at a school, is it like, it's a different situation on how many people respond and how you're going there and versus like an open space?
Yes.
Grill fire, just, I, I mean, right, are you?
It's a hazard. It's a significantly higher hazard at a school than is at an open space.
All right.
So then to your point, Rachel, we should add number of schools in each district somewhere here.
I, I believe so. I think we should.
Okay, and this is, this is that page that we really haven't looked at, but I think back to your point, it does, it does break down some of the non-taxable into different categories. But it doesn't say school, but I get your point. It may be more, more detail into that non-taxable, whether it's cemetery or a school or, you know, whatever it may be.
If, if you don't mind me saying that the information that you're looking for, it, it's fantastic, but the, the one point four nine million is for state-owned properties. You're asking me for town-owned properties. So I guess that's my question is, are you just going to say all one big thing? Or are you going to say, okay, the one point five of the state-owned properties, we split that up? And then the hundred and twenty-six that we started for town properties, we split that up.
What do you think, David?
Yeah, can you, can you kind of reframe that again? Because you, you kind of lost it. I know the one, five, the one, four, nine is state-owned.
Yeah, so the one point four nine million is pilot fund money that the state of Connecticut gives to the town of Groton for payment in lieu of taxes of state-owned properties within the town. And then in two thousand two, the town allocated a separate fund of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That was for town-owned properties within the fire districts. So.
Municipal is in there, it looks like. You have state separate. They look at everything, all the non-taxable properties, part of their things. You've got, you know, municipal hospital, they're all categories, so it counts. It's not state. Basically, anything that the state waves taxes on through their laws, that's what's in there.
That's what's in one, five, right?
Yep.
Right. But when you're asking me about open space, open space could be bluff point, that's state property.
Right, which.
Which is, which, yeah, which, 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 high school would be town-owned property. But I'd say, yeah, Paquonic Plain Parks would be town-owned property. You know?
If, if I can jump in, um, Chair. I don't know necessarily just trying to let me think of how to word this. I, I think we're looking for an inventory as well for each fire district, because it is important to know if you have schools that are occupied in your district, it's important for us to know when we're looking at pilot funding. If you've got is Pequot in your fire district?
Yeah.
If we've got a hospital in your fire district that is occupied, that's important for us to know.
Yeah, possible way to weigh it a little more.
Right.
That, yeah, that, have your weight, such as maybe a cemetery.
You might have to rate, come up with a one through four rating system on the property. You know, if, if there's a piece of property with two or three people in it, or if you got a school with fifteen hundred people, you gotta, you know.
I think that weighs heavier.
Oh, yeah, right. And you might end up. Oh, yeah, right, and you might end up having a one through four chart, you know, the cemetery ain't really gonna matter.
But I think we're, we're not necessarily looking at it as town owned versus state owned, I think we're looking at, at it. More as an inventory of the types of buildings in each fire district, does that make sense?
And then also if you do have open space and it's like. Like acres and acres where you're gonna have to go trudging through miles to go.
And what about the retreats? Way more occupied potential is Wolfbrook, you know?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, cause I imagine it's a little different, if you thought there could be a hundred people in there, personally, one or two.
Yeah. I, I have all that information.
Okay. David, I think, but we should come up with some kind of rating system, not just value of property, correct?
Those are, those are great suggestions, so, uh, we'll definitely wait things, but how, where would we get? All the details to the, for the various districts in terms of the inventory, how, how would we be able to pay that, I mean, I'll.
We could send to each member, it's, will they all fill that way?
Well, didn't we talk about sending a certified letter to each fire district? I think this is going to be something that needs to be a part of that, to say that we are looking for the types of properties.
They don't reply?
I think if they don't reply, it also says something to the council, you know.
And taking into account. It, it's, the council's looking for the safety of the town.
Correct.
So you're checking on the fire districts.
Yes, well.
Who's got what and what, you know, so that you have, you have an overview of everything in the whole town. And that's really what should be done anyway, you know, the, cause the, the people in the districts, you know, nobody goes to the meetings.
I have.
I know you have. But you know what I'm saying, it's, so at least the council could say, oh, this could be a problem here.
And I don't necessarily view it as checking on the districts, we're looking at the pilot funding right now, so it's important for us to have this information when we're making. Decisions on how we allocate the pilot funding.
They all might gain the hope of.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're all gonna do better.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, of course.
Chief, do you have a better way of, um. Looking at our, your calls volume about, rather than ambulance EMS? Fire, I did, cause that's very vague, so do you have a better breakdown of how we can track your types of calls?
Um, I was actually gonna ask if I could have that sent to me, I'll fill that out tomorrow and send it back.
If that's okay, and then you can tell us if you see something that should be worded differently, so let them be the kind of pilot.
Sure, yeah, I would appreciate, cause. I, I know this is not.
No, I.
If you could, like, make a better breakdown of your types of calls that you're seeing, rather than.
Yeah, cause you probably have a lot of, like, motor vehicle.
Right.
Accidents, that might be a different category.
The A's extricate, like, whatever you feel is a better category, no offense, Chair McBride.
This was a rough job, I don't find it.
Just a better way of tracking the types of calls that the fire departments are seeing.
We all have a, we have to report our incidents to the state. And then it goes to the federal government eventually, but it's all categorized that way. So I can probably break down the categories that way for you, and then now it'd be easy for everyone just to carry on. Firehouse, yeah, so those are important. And so everyone will be giving the same information to you, I can do that, if I, if I work on that, then I can put notes at the bottom and say. I can show you this, I can give you examples, and then if that helped you.
And would that.
Have all that information.
Would that make it easier for the other departments to respond in that manner as well, because they have to report in the same way?
It should, yeah.
Okay, perfect, yeah, that would be great, thank you.
That's very helpful, thank you for doing that.
There's no problem.
So that will be, I mean, you think we can have that? I guess back to the letter and back to this categorization, and the thirteenth. Do we want to send that letter? If, if Mr. Driss won't get this wrapped up, we have a draft for the thirteenth, you want me to send that letter out? To have them come for the thirteenth with that draft document? That they can review it in, you know, for that meeting? Then that's doable?
Let's say if you could give me any potential changes or anything by the Thursday, is that possible? So we can mail something out to everybody on Friday, email and mail.
Well, what is David asked, that, we all, the, the letter before we send it out?
Oh, do you wanna see, do, or you wanted to improve the form of it first, David, before going out?
The, the, which letter to the other districts?
Yeah.
I, I'm okay if we, we just work on it and send it out, I mean, I don't need to fine tune everything. As long as you, you, we're on the same page on what it's, what.
Like this, would you just wanna get it outgoing?
Right, yeah, but then the thing is, like we said, are you just gonna email it?
I'll email it so they have some time, and we'll certify mail it also.
We have proof that they received it.
Yeah, we'll do.
And maybe ask them for a debt, like, please return by a certain date.
So let's see. Oh, no, well, maybe get emailed.
You may wanna say something to the effect of, we're reviewing the pilot funding, and your response is greatly.
Right.
You know.
Oh.
Needed.
For some of these departments, two weeks by the time they get it physically in the mail, make it a little. Height for them to show up here, I don't know, what do you think? Otherwise, we can have it, like. It'll be nice, first of all, compile it, you know, if they get sent it by maybe the sixteenth of June. And then, um, so we'll probably be getting it on the twenty seventh, and of course, Tuesday. Type the pilot, then also ask them to come and present or be their questions.
Gonna suggest, maybe we suggest that they have something back to us by the. Whatever the next meeting was, thirteen, but, you know, and then give them.
We could give, but then you could have a preliminary look.
Right, and discussion about, you know, the preliminary findings that we get from it, and then we can bring them in.
Do you think that's a reasonable, uh, at least have them send it in the thirteenth? Two weeks after they get it, hard happy, about two and a half weeks after they get it.
Should it all be listed to?
I, I would think so, uh, I mean, most of that stuff I, I have, I have gotten from the GIS, so those numbers are from. The GIS people, I mean, obviously they want, they, they should review it, but I, that's where all my numbers came through, uh, IFT Department, GIS.
But as far as the accidents and the, the calls, they should have that written down already, right?
Somewhere.
They have to report all that out, don't they?
Yeah, we have to report that every month, has to be sent to the state of Connecticut.
So it's really just.
That their response would be greatly helpful, but also, like, a non-response weigh heavily on how maybe we. Review the numbers. Cause we've tried to get them to come before, tried to get them to join in the conversation, and some of them just haven't responded, so.
Is it gonna be a lot to get in, in one hour if everybody shows up?
I don't know if they present, it's more to answer any questions, first of all, I think.
I think a big question.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, it's not gonna just be one meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna have a decision.
They don't have to stay here throughout the whole process of deciding how you're weighed everything, it's just, here's information.
They think certain things should be weighed heavier than others, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, it'd be good to have everybody know what's going on, that's for sure, and we're, we're working for everybody, we're, um. Try and help them all out, so, I know I would be here, here if it was money for our department.
Right, that's what I would think, now.
Well, can we kind of word that in the letter somewhat that we're, we're considering potentially making a recommendation? To the council of potentially increasing pilot funding?
That won't be voted on by the group, the letter itself, so I can send it out, and you can send any comments back to me.
Perfect. Alright, so where, where are we, so, that's the, I mean, those were the, the, the two main things I think were, well, three main things, the fire training, but then the two pieces of. That we wanted to move forward with was, um, what we just talked about in detail, but then also the summary, John, do you have any thoughts on? On this summary piece, you know, this, um. Percentage, I mean, I know we gotta get information from Mary, but there must be some rationale for. Why the percentage has been what it has been.
Yeah, well, remember, I provided some documents, it's been a while, it's been probably a few months, but, uh. You know, there was a formula that was supposed to be used that they didn't quite really use, and then they just locked it in place. But, um, a couple other formulas were li- were looked at over the years, and then not pursued. So I think they're a good base on some of, you know, some of the basic stuff like. And non taxable and area and stuff, and then you start pulling in your new factory, you wanna, I'd say start looking there and see if, any of them. Purpose, something we could expand on.
And I'm wondering.
Do it the next meeting, though.
Do you, is this, you know what the total non taxable land that the town doesn't receive taxes on, with that numbers, is it?
Well, everything's there that's non taxable on that spreadsheet.
This one right here?
Yes.
So I'm just high level, so that's one point five billion. These are the percentages, Proquod Bridge at twenty eight, so this is the loss in taxes, right?
Right.
So, you, you're getting one point seven million in taxes when you should have been receiving, when I say you, I mean, the entire town. Should have received one point, uh, thirty million. Is that right?
Oh, say it again.
I don't know if I'm off a number here, uh, if this is the number, the one point five billion.
Assess value that you then have to translate into what the value would be by the mill rate.
So it'd be seventy percent of this number. Cause I have the mill right here, I, I guess what I'm trying to do is come up with an understanding of what the town is missing out on as well.
Yeah, let me put a little, I don't wanna talk incorrectly, so I might spend a little time with that.
Okay, no, that's fair, but I think that's what this committee needs to look at, is those, those numbers to be able to make a, a recommendation on. What's fair to the town and fair to the districts.
But also, when you consider what's fair to the town, on one hand. What is the town, is the town responding to that property for anything, do they have to? Are they maintaining it?
Well, the thing is, by not having those taxes, it increases everybody else's taxes, so, I mean.
No, I get that. But you're not, like, going there to rescue people.
Well, a lot of the open space we're mowing, you know, the, 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 you know, the, 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 yeah.
Like for state property.
Not for state property, that's only one category of that.
Right.
So. There's things, there's things we do for different things on there.
But that's a good point, Rachel, I mean, that, we gotta find out with what, come up with some, figure out what the town spends. Providing some, what type of services for the property that's not getting taxed. Right, so.
Yeah.
And that would probably involve Public Works and.
Because if you're getting, like, let's just say state money, and you're getting pilot funding for it. Like bluff point, we don't do anything with bluff point, as a town.
Yeah, policemen out there for different things, but yeah, and like nonprofits, police, obviously, but they also take advantage of, well. I still think if, like, everyone, you know, it's still what funds everything, so these are different than, than, I still think, like, it's the total picture.
No, I think we should. Like, that's why I'm asking, like, what do we do, what do we provide to these different spaces, or, or whatever, you know? If it's a state property, you know, we, as a town, provide to them, what kind of services, versus like, what does? Fire districts provide to them.
Yeah, but then you look at fire districts, no, that's what, what's the year that most people go out there, so I, I don't think you can. I think you have to look at the mill rate in total, really, is what I think that's what get, is apples to apples.
We go off a bit, but I, I, I understand the town, the town's point of view that you can't just give all the money, I.
No, I get.
I, I, and that there, there's definitely, you're, there's a tax loss for the town, I mean, my numbers. Going through, um, I have the town at. Sixty five percent of being able to tax sixty five percent of the, of the, of the properties. Which I think is still really low, but we're only at forty five percent, so.
And, and.
So we're together in the, in the, in the dreary right there, that's open space and, and state owned properties.
Of all town property, including like Mystic and.
So, so.
Or just towns.
That, that's, that's kind of, where. I wanna be careful when I say this, but. We're twelve point one six square miles of nothing but ground. We have nothing to do with Stonington side of the river or anything like that, whereas Old Mystic and Mystic. They have a little bit of ground, and then a lot of Stonington, and that's where bulk of their money comes from.
Yeah, some city property.
And then, then, then at us, we have city property in the middle of our district, that's a mile, one and a half square miles. So, that's why, you know, just, it just compounds up the cost.
And I think it goes back to asking about the other portion of the pilot fund, the town portion, cause a piece of that. Municipal is town property values, it's so, that's a little different than, you know. I, that might be treated a little differently than other people's municipal values.
I mean, a fifty percent split, I think, is, is, is very fair. Um. I just think now, figuring out how we break that up, and. I, I just think that, my, my concern is that we have so much state owned property in my fire district. That, that one point five paying for that state, or that, that share paying for that, but then we have. A lot of town owned property, the massive amount of town owned properties, I'd like to still see some money coming from that, too.
And I think you might, let's say you had a fifty percent shared on this, but then you have something separate for the, you know, value for, any value for towns.
Because that's, that's, you know, back to your point of, you know, bitch senior high, that's a much higher hazard. And say, quantum is part, it, it truly is, and then I, and I wait, I, I like that idea, and that philosophy, and I wait.
And as you look at formulas, you can also plug in values and see what the effects of the formula that, you know, play with it, kind of see what each. How, how do they profit for one versus the other, and obviously.
And, and for us, the top three taxpayers are the state of Connecticut, our Groton, in my fire district. We can't collect anything out of them, and then the city of Groton, and actually, uh, top five.
They also end up benefiting, benefiting other fire districts because we. May not realize how many populated buildings that they have in their districts. End up working out for others as well.
Wait, wait, I have talked.
Most likely everyone would benefit to some level, whatever you guys do, I would think.
Now, what happens to when, uh, Goshen gets a piece of property? Is that considered town owned property?
No.
It's their property.
Their property.
And we don't get no taxes on that either, and you, but some of that you're doing some maintenance on.
Well, like, yeah, well, Wolfbrook will be ours, that's the only one that's ours, that's not a Gosa property. That's just a town park property, um, we will, we'll admit a little vainness there, but anything like Gosa's pursuing a couple other properties. That's totally separate from us, that's, yeah, we don't do anything with them, they don't pay anything.
The last figures are night high.
They get protected under deep, and there's all kinds of things to do with that.
Well, that's liability, but that's not under any kind of ownership of them, there's a state law of her, that David's talked. That, that was talked about, that being hit by a tree, there's special, there's a law that protects the agents from any liability.
The goat that owns like the merit property, that we're saying, at the top before, you know?
Yeah, it's, so I mean, the state didn't take over, yes, yeah.
There, right now, there's four point one seven square miles of town property, and three point nine three square miles of state owned property, but. That's how. Well, that's.
Sheep farm would be theirs.
And they're, because they're a nonprofit.
Right, they're calling it a nonprofit status.
But I thought they came to the council and then asked to bring it, and make it like. Put it in with us, if that, the sheep farm and things like that, or do they just have to come to us to ask for? We, we approve stuff like that. As a council. Sheep farm had came to us, was it the grant?
Oh, it was because of the application process for the grant, I think. There was something that they needed our sign off on, but we had nothing to do with ownership, though.
But then we also had to, like, approve it going into open space, is that?
No, no, because they bought stuff that we had no say in.
No, they bought it.
No, I mean, it was like, just, just like when they, um. Oh geez, uh, up along one eighty four, they bought, there was the till count property, there was the fight over. Council didn't want that, but it was put in anyways, the council didn't have a say on it. So no, you don't sign off on open space, they, they buy, maintain, it's up to them. Just like any other, like.
Doesn't, at some point, the council have to say, well, we're gonna write that off, or, once they buy it, it's automatically written off.
Well, like any other tax, non taxable land. But we just lose that value, yeah.
But, so as soon as they purchase it, whether we want them to purchase it or not.
Right.
It's written off.
We'll lose the value, right?
Yeah.
So we, that's a reduction in our, what we were getting in taxes. Assuming it was private land, yeah.
They've got quite a bit of land in the town.
Uh, just to back up, John, will the listing that we're providing the categorization? And, and once Tim sends the list back, will that provide a list that the town can then say what work is done on, on those various properties?
Well, it won't be broken down by proper, I don't think you're gonna break it down to that. And you, you know, you provide the same coverage to all land unless there's a special circulate more people than, you know. I don't think you wanna, I don't think you're gonna differentiate between different open spaces. I, we're not gonna really break down, we spend this number of hours mowing or anything like that.
Alright, that makes sense. Alright, that makes sense.
When will you send this spreadsheet out, David?
I'll send it right after this meeting.
Alright.
And who, you want me to send it to this, oh, everyone in this group right here?
Yeah, that's great.
Alright, so any other, um. Discussion items, I think this has been helpful to move things next, and we'll plan on, plan on the thirteenth, does that sound good, we'll get the letter out? Have some homework to do.
I'll let Lisa know about the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any, anywhere, we've got a few more minutes, but, um, any other items you'd like to discuss? Nope, we're good, let me.
Special meeting. Can't add any more items.
No, I, I meant, I meant related to those ones.
I'm just waiting on the responses for some of these, though.
Okay, good, we'll, we'll move forward in this direction, and, uh, plan, I mean, on the thirteenth, is it?
Sounds good.
Is it wrapped?
Alright, motion to adjourn, second.
Motion to adjourn by Council Casari, seconded by Council Franco, any discussion of the motion to adjourn? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at six twenty-three, alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time.
Look.
Take care.